Next item, please.
Next item is special reports. The first one is the 2024-2025 budget from Mr. Tom Wall.
Good evening, President Moses, Dr. Malakal, members of the board. As part of our budgetary process and our own calendar, we have a public hearing that we have on our budget at a very high level because our district is so large, we can't get into the minute data, but I'm always willing to go there if you want to have a discussion on it again. So the first screen you have here, and I'll spend some time on a lot of it, some on a little bit, we're on the last few items on our budget calendar, the last two items. So the second from the last is our public hearing. This is the last time we have a discussion at a broad level on the budget. And then on June 23rd, which is our next board meeting and our last one before the end of the fiscal year, that's when we actually adopt the budget. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions. This is the budget cycle for Michigan. Right now, we're, we finished April, we're in early May, where we have seen some of the floor action. The governor has come out with her budget plan. The House has come up with a very, you know, very little detail besides giving us a foundation allowance and cutting category articles. And the Senate just came out a week and a half ago. And so we have the general ideas where each of the components of legislative process want to go in the budget. That's what we use to put this together. The next date, which is important, is the one after the budget hearing. On this Friday, the actual three, the governor, the House, and the Senate will get together and look at the new financials for the state of Michigan and where it's headed on just the funding available for the general fund budget and the school aid budget. So this Friday will give us a better idea of where we have, what monies we have, and what resources to have. And then they meet in consensus to kind of get together where they're going to decide these are the revenues, all three parties will agree, and then they'll have a meeting to discuss what the next state aid process is. But as Dr. Michael mentioned, there will be a lot of negotiating because there's a lot of different viewpoints of how to spend the money in the state of Michigan. So what I want to talk about is a little bit more about the economic side because a lot of our budget is based on estimates. Looking at this graph, this is what makes up our school aid budget. This is where our money comes from the state. You'll see in the bottom left is sales tax. So depending on how the economy does and how the consumers want to spend their money, they'll spend more money when they feel comfortable. And when the economy is kind of up in the air like a recession, they'll spend less money. So that has an impact to our school aid fund. The other part is the income tax. So wages, depending on how wages are and what people earn, part of that comes in for the sales tax. And the other part is the state education tax. So the property values just came out last week. And so we have an idea where our property taxes are going, and that will help fund the school aid fund. This is looking how the school aid fund is actually spent. You can see roughly half of it comes through our foundation allowance, roughly 50% comes through our foundation allowance. That's where the most money comes out of the school aid budget and comes to schools on a per pupil allocation. So looking at some of the graphs, as you can see, the federal unemployment rate remains a focus because of all the cuts at the federal level. This just gave me some graphs where it's been recently. You can see it's been a large spike lately as we're dealing with the change in where the federal government is going to a less employee-driven and more looking at individual departments. Obviously, the other thing that's been coming through is the tariffs. So you can see that's something very important for us because it's going to impact our economy of how much money the consumers are willing to spend in their comfort level. And you can see what's most affected. If you look on the far right-hand side with the tariffs, the auto is in there, manufacturing. So those are two big things that affect Michigan. So we know it's going to eventually impact us. Obviously, the negotiating is going on, so we don't know if it's going to happen earlier or later, but it's something we have to watch. And looking at this, when the tariff rates do take effect, you can look at, they have some items on the far left that tells you every 10% increase in tariff rate will lead to a .8 increase in inflation. So obviously, when the numbers are thrown out there, that 100% tariff, you're looking at a potential big impact to what it means to the economy, which means indirectly how the money is available for us when it gets down to our school aid funding. And this just shows the short-term impacts, midterm and long-term. You know, long-term is going to be good for the state, but that will take time. And we haven't been in a tariff situation in a very long time, so we don't know how long that will take. So we do expect some growing pains early on on our budget availability of funds. And looking at the consumer sentiment, this University of Michigan is showing or expecting a decline in the index for how people feel about the economy, which means the inverse effect of growing inflation expectations. So us for Dearborn, this just looks at, you know, just kind of give you some data where the consumer, you know, GDP is going, you know, it's kind of up and down. But, you know, if you're economists, you could probably make a lot of money these days trying to figure out where all this is going to eventually head up. And just inflation, we're right around 3%. So that's what we're kind of using in our budget expectations of looking at how inflation is going to impact us next year. All right, getting more into our details, you can see, I always like to put this screen up every year, that we have what we call buckets of funds. The most restrictive is on the right-hand side with capital project. We can only spend it on that items. The debt funds, we actually have a debt levy, which we'll talk about later, is to pay back the, you know, bond costs that we have done back in the past. The special revenue funds, they have their own funding source, and so their expenses are tied to that funding source. Anything not in any of these other categories falls into the general fund. And that's where we talk mostly about today is our general fund and the impact that we're going to have. If special revenue funds get impacted, they try to mitigate it themselves in the individual funds. If they cannot, then the general fund does pick up the either plus or minus, depending on which way it goes. But it's always good to see a visualization of where the money is at in our schools. This is the graph that Mr. Barry talked about earlier. We're going to expand that to show the other unions in there also. So this just shows you the red line for the teacher salaries, the yellow line for retirement costs. If you remember, that was a big item last year where they actually went back on the retirement rate for the balances of the retirement fund. But now they kind of reversed it, went back up. So it's kind of, it's, it's very difficult to keep following. We like a more traditional managed approach of being in the same arenas of holiday fund schools, but they are playing games right now and moving things up and then reversing, going back down the next time. Our student count, you know, you have this green, which is green, and the blue is our funding from our state foundation allowance per pupil. All right, talking about millage rates, that's one of the requirements of the public hearing is talk about millage rates. So you can see, this is the history of our millage rate since 2012. Right now, for 2025, we just got the rates last week. We're looking at a 1.22 rate for the debt fund for next year. Hold harmless, the state just gave out the form today how to calculate it. So I used last year's form to kind of go through the process and came out to 2.2. You'll see last year was 4.3 and a little higher than 4.3. That's because the previous year, the cities had a clerical error and didn't do it. So that's why it's doubled last year, but it's getting back to what would normally would be for this current year. So that's why you see a big change for that. And the standard 18 mils for non-home step property, that's what helps fund the school aid fund and one of those three pieces of pies that make up a large portion of our funding.
So, I'm sorry, next year, it's, or this coming year, what is the millage rate for the hold harmless?
For the hold harmless, 2.2.
2.2?
Yes.
Okay.
If you remember, last year, we just renewed that. It was at 6.17. Previous to that, we locked it down to four mils, and we're actually levying only 2.2. And there's a state formula that they give us. They just gave it to us today, but I used last year's form because it doesn't change a lot. And that's where I'm estimating about 2.2 increase or what the established home harmless rate is. This is just showing our debt schedule. If you look on the far right-hand side, we were estimated to be a 1.25, but the taxable values went up higher than expected. And so we are only at 1.22. So we're actually a little better off because the taxable values have increased more. This is the actual, the form that we turn in. There's one for the city of Dearborn and one for the city of Dearborn Heights. In Dearborn, we have what we call a summer levy. All our taxes are levied in the summer. So it says on your summer tax bill in the city of Dearborn. You can see our 2.2, the 18, and the 1.2, that's in column 10. That's what we levy in the summer levy. And we also levy on behalf of the college, too. We have one form for both entities. We'll talk about that at your budget hearing when you have the college side. And the actual increase in taxable value is 9.95% this year in Dearborn. So it actually is quite high for us, which is above, which hence helped our reduction in our debt millage slightly by the point three. In the city of Dearborn Heights, oh, did I have that backwards? Oh, hold on one second, please.
You did it right.
Nope, I did the city of Dearborn twice. I should have the city of Dearborn Heights on there for this other one. So I apologize. The only change is it's a split levy, 50% in the summer and 50% in the winter. So in Dearborn Heights, you'll actually see it on both winter bills, summer and levy. So that column 10 would be halved, and the other half would be in column 11. This is our student counts. If you remember, last year, we, with a large flux of students coming in after the count date, we weren't able to count those. So those 300 students, that's why you're seeing a large loss last year compared to the current year. And next year, a majority of those students are, were there in the winter count. So that's why you see a slight increase for projection for next year. So overall, we're looking like a flat enrollment for next year, but our spring is higher because of those kids that came in after count date. They made it for the second count date. You are seeing, you know, that we do have an increase next year and the foundation calculation of FTEs for students. And just for a little history lesson, our foundation, we get, next year, we're expecting a 392 per pupil increase. And so that will give us our revenue of roughly about 199 million from state aid. But with the 18 mils, the state expects us to levy that. And so we get the net from the state after the 18 mils. If we didn't levy those 18 mils, the state would say you're required to. And whether you do it or not, that's your decision. They don't make up the difference. So if we didn't levy those 18 mils, we would lose that $39 million. That's why the importance of the renewal last February on our operational millage. Looking at our counts, so this kind of just gives you a lot of data of what the counts are and what we're forecasting is based on the 90/10. So 90% comes from the fall student count and 10% from the winter, or the spring, winter count, which is winter, spring time. And we're looking at the third column, the kind of light purple, the 392 is what we're expecting on our foundation allowance. The Senate came in at 400, the House came in at 350. So we're kind of blending that to get to the 392 student count. Normally, we'd go after the purple column, but unfortunately, the, they have not agreed yet. So the purple column is what reality is on the consensus committee. We typically don't know that, but we have there just in case you do get a budget done early. That happened a few times during Governor Snyder's reign where they actually got us to it. It's in May, and we could actually use that data. This is just looking at staffing. As you can see, the green bar is our student count. The other bar is our staffing, the, the vertical. This is not unexpected because we've gotten a lot more grants. And with some grants, we're able to do more staffing costs in those grants. But again, that's, if the grants go away, which we've been talking about earlier today, if the grants go away, we have to figure out how to handle that staff. And so that's something we have to be very cognizant of and prepare for, that if that does happen, we know how to move forward with the district. Looking at our staffing cost, the contract is settled, so we actually know what the percentage will be. For next year, it's 2% base and another 2% on the increase in the foundation allowance. Right now, our increase in the foundation allowance is 3.9%. So they'll get that 2%, but until they actually pass the law, we can't move forward with that. So coming in July, we'll give everybody the 2% base. And once state law is decided, we'll retro back to July 1st or whatever date the contract starts to give them the extra compensation. A good example of why we don't put all 4% ahead of time, last year, we were expected to get a foundation increase. When the final bill came out for state aid, we got zero. Well, that's why we just can't move forward with it. It's much easier to give extra money later than try to take money away. And as Dr. Michael stated earlier, we go off a three-model comp, you know, system. We have our worst case, we have our best case, and we have our most likely. At this point, we're moving forward with the most likely scenario, obviously, still based on a lot of estimates. We're looking at roughly a net 35.79 FTE reduction. To say why it's a net, we have a new building coming online in the fall for the early college. So we have to make sure we have the appropriate staffing for that, like an engineer, custodial, food service, things like that. And we also have to make sure we're within our budgetary parameters of trying to get a balanced budget. So that's a net number. Now, obviously, we're looking to right-size and making sure it's done by attrition as much as possible. So we're not laying off. And that's where we get into the conversations that we just had that some buildings might be surplus or department surplus, but they should have a job somewhere else in the district. And I, we understand it's not easy, but we have to juggle that to make sure that we can work it. It's not so simple because of certifications for teachers. So you have cases, and I know HR works very hard on this, between a couple weeks ago all the way through September, trying to get people in the right positions and follow the contract to make sure it's fairly done for everybody. Capital improvement, one of the things that we have done in the past, we've had a lot of surplus money. We're at that point now. We just don't have the surplus to put forward. So we only have budgeted $2 million for capital repairs and replacements. They might seem like a lot of money, but it's not for our size district, and that won't go very far. Obviously, as things become more clear as we go forward, we have no eventually idea where the numbers are actually at. We'll look at that and look at replacing staffing. That's kind of a conversation we'll have once we have more firm numbers. But at this point, we have to at least move forward with an estimated budget. We always look at key items. You'll see the 104.19, that's the actual FTE increase. So we get some money for that. Health insurance, that's set by the state because of the current state law, that's going to increase by 0.2%. But I'm happy to say that DSEHP does their work behind the scenes, and there's no increase for employment, for our healthcare costs for the employees for next year. And then we also have the number of retirements estimated 50. I don't know if we have a final number, but I think we've hit that number. So, but we're pretty close, if not over that 50. So that's good that our budget model is kind of in line with what our expectations are. Having said that, there's a lot more detail behind the scenes. We'd have gone through that with the finance committee at a later date, but we're looking at a balanced budget of roughly about 112,000 surplus of what we're moving forward with. And on the best-case scenario, if things go where we think where they could go, looking at mainly the Senate plan, that we could have a $4.2 million surplus, which means we wouldn't be laying off any teachers. So again, that's the, that best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, we're almost roughly about, you know, a 60 student or employee reduction on a worst-case scenario. And we actually worked through those numbers that we have a plan. We hope we never have to implement, but if it does get that way, there will be a lot more discussions of what we have to do to get to make sure we still have a balanced budget. And I have some items just on the bottom. You know, I talked briefly about the UAL rate, which is the rate that they use for all the staff that have already retired and in the retirement program. Last year was 10.58, now it's at 16.89. Last year, it was around roughly 17, they went down to 10.58. And that's why you're seeing that little jog in the retirement numbers because they switched how we fund retirement. And I'm sure they'll be on the discussion board again of how that looks. And just some other smaller items, talk about capital replacement. Some of the things that are in that number to get us balanced, that we're looking at some reductions in capital outlay and supplies, but there would be no impact to the unit budget. We do give each building a unit budget that they decide is decentralized. They decide how to spend it. That's not being impacted. We're trying to stay away from the classroom as much as possible. All right, looking forward, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, this Friday is a big date because that kind of sets the revenues available to determine what the budgets will be based upon. We have to adopt a budget by June 30th. Otherwise, we're in violation of state law. So it will be you moving forward with the most likely scenario. We're going to continue to monitor. Roughly about 8% of the funding that comes to Michigan is in the school aid fund. So if we start losing federal money, that's something we're prepared to look at. Most of our grants are basically made up of staffing costs. So if it does impact us, staffing will be adjusted or be impacted by that and see how we're going to handle that. Depending on when that happens, you know, as we did last year, we did not expect that 300 reduction in student, in student count last year. So we absorbed it, and they were supposed to make the change going through this budget process. So that's something we'll have to talk about of how to handle that if things come out worse than expected. This kind of shows you where we're at. Obviously, we're close to being done, but we still have a lot to do on watching the budget modifications. We have a plan in place. So depending on how the discussions go forward and what we hear from the state, you might see some adjustments to the budget that we'll approve on the June 23rd. But we'll bring forward those ideas, what changed, so you at least have an idea of what changed from our discussions. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Wall from the board? Trustee Barry?
Not a question for Mr. Wall. I'm sure you don't have the data on front of you, Dr. Malakal. Probably look into it for the year, school year '22, '23, and '23, '24. Yes, the question, the magic question is, are we starting to see, the students that we lost those two years, are we starting to see them coming back, check with student service? And if we're not, is there anything we can do to, I mean, we, we kind of know where those students went. Are we looking into that?
'22, '23, you said?
'22, '23, then '23, '24.
Okay.
Both years we lost students.
Yeah.
For multiple reasons.
See if they're coming back, okay.
See if they're coming back. And if they're not, what is it that we can do to kind of say, hey, it's a couple years later, this is where we're at type thing?
If they're actually in the system, we do get reports from the state where they've gone to.
That's what I'm saying. We know where they're at.
We have that kind of data.
Well, '22, '23, we had good information where they, they were. We had that discussion here. But the following year, we still lost some more students.
Yeah, if they've never been in the school system before, like people that are coming from overseas, new.
It's a whole different story.
So that, we, we don't have any data.
That's all different. I understand that. Thank you. Great job, Mr. Wall.
And so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was trying to, sorry, follow on, Trustee Barry, what does that really matter in the sense of knowing where they went? If they're not in our district, they're impacting our budget. So I was trying to follow if there was any, if they went somewhere else where we know where they went, does it really matter? Because they're not with us anymore.
Yeah, one example I gave, during the pandemic, we noticed that kids did not want to come back. So we did start our own virtual program here in the district. And I believe, I can't remember the numbers. Do you have any numbers on the virtual program?
Right now?
Yes.
We're between 500 and 600.
So that, that's potentially 500 or 600 kids we would not have still in the district if we didn't open our virtual program. So can you react to it? May or may not. But at least if you have the data why, maybe you'll can maybe change something and look at it.
History tells us, Trustee, I mean, history tells us that when people think that, you know, grass is greener on the other side of the fence, and they take their students to a charter school or whatever they take them, usually after a couple years, they do come back to doing public schools because of missed opportunities, you know, the athletic programs, the theater programs, the kids start missing out on that. We tend, we still can, kind of tends to see them start coming back. That's why I'm bringing that up.
Not if they graduate in six months, which I'm being sarcastic, using Penn Foster. And I'm seeing kids doing that. There's a couple kids that play in my, in our youth program. They went to Penn Foster, graduated, one of them in less than a year. So those will not come back.
That's a whole different story.
I'm just saying that's something to keep on our radar when it comes to losing kids. Those are the ones that we should pay attention to.
Absolutely.
Well, we just want to make sure, though, because we've heard this now for the last couple of years about Penn Foster. And, and it's an enticing thing for a student to know that they can go to a virtual school and get, walk away, not have to put in the work at a, you know, four years in a high school setting. But I want to make sure that when we're going to try to capture these kids or, or try to convince them to come back, that we don't lower our standards in order to make it appealing to those students who are looking for a fast graduation projection. I do have another question as well. It, it was, if my memory serves me right, the state came up with a, they were going to, because they understood that their October deadline for their budget didn't align with our June deadline for our budget, that they would try to have something for us in July so that we were a little better aligned, that they'd at least give us some sense. Do you, right now, I, I did have a conversation with one of our senators when I ran into her recently. And she said, there was a lot of foot dragging going on in Lansing right now, because I explained to her how, you know, it, it still continues to impact our decision-making. Have you heard anything differently that, that we might at least have a good sense? Because we have so many uncertainties from the federal government, which I don't, I'm not even certain they, they're following any kind of calendar schedule. They're just throwing out these ultimatums of, we're taking this away and that away until there's nothing left. Have you at least heard from the state that they're going to attempt to get us some better idea?
The revenue consensus that happens twice a year, once in January, once in May. Once in January showed a very favorable economy going forward. I envision, though, this May one might reduce those numbers, you know, to what they were expected in January. So depending if the money is tighter, then more negotiation is going to go on. So this Friday is kind of a big day, but if they stay firm in what their projections are, there's a lot of money on the table. It's just how they're going to spend it. So the more money, the easier it is.
Those damn roads are still part of the equation now.
And all my sources are saying it's probably going to be dragged out most, most likely through the political process.
That's what I was hearing. It makes it difficult to, for anybody to plan.
Yes, but we have to have a budget in the plan moving forward for our size district. We can't.
You're doing heroic work.
Yes.
Seeing no more questions. Second item is to invite any citizens to ask questions. So if you may step forward and ask your question regarding the budget. If you can state your name, too.
I'm Ira Seidi. First of all, it was really hard to follow the presentation. And I know when you guys have the board meetings at Henry Ford College, you actually have printouts for people in the audience. So I'm just wondering if we could at least have it for something with so many charts and the, like, this is, I'm basically just like orally trying to follow a very complicated presentation. So.
Just not to interrupt you, but the, all of the materials are available also on the meeting website.
Docs. We, we went in to try to click and they wouldn't open. So again, just having handouts. There's very few of us ever left at the end. So I think, you know, just 10, 15 would serve a purpose. Principals at the middle school level got an email today saying that they each have to eliminate one FTE. So decisions are already being made. And I understand that we, as a district, have to have a balanced budget. We did have AFT National analyze our financials in this district a year ago. And we can send you the report, but basically, it showed that administrative or non-instructional raises were a bit higher. So I, I think it was, was it 24 or 22?
24 for mental health, 23 for failing.
And then 18% for teachers. So there are cuts that could be made that doesn't, we, teachers have told you years, for years, that we are spread thin. We need help in the classroom. We can't expend parapros. We need the custodians to clean our classrooms to keep everybody healthy. So the cuts can't be happening at the grassroots level. So getting this email today was very disheartening. Everybody's concerned, everyone who has kids and has had absences. So what we're asking is, is there going to be any transparency in how the decisions align with the goal of protecting classroom resources? So are we, is there going to be a community collaborative effort into making these cuts and presentations that aren't microscopic text on a screen? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Any others who have any questions about the budget?
I just don't, I just don't want the audience to think this because we have other responsibilities that we rushed through this. Dr. Mr. Wall did disclose that, you know, there'll be more details coming. This was just kind of overview. I don't want somebody sitting at home thinking, oh, they just rushed through this because they had something else to do. That's, that's not the case.
Trustee Al Jamin?
I think for me, it's, I thought the cuts have not, the decision to make the cuts have not been made. But I'm hearing that a decision But I'm hearing that a decision has already been made to eliminate an FTE at the, each school, if I heard it correct.
Some, some of that is to do with class size, so, excuse me, enrollment. So last year, when we had those students that we, they didn't come into our budget because they left after count, we made a decision not to reduce staff because our class sizes are very low overall, on average, than they've ever been. And we decided not to disrupt. So right now, because of the way the budget is at the state level, and again, we're trying to, you know, handle all the compensation increases, you know, that are negotiated in the contracts and percentages, and Tom has all that in there. So there's been a lot of reductions, but it's based, a lot of it is based on class size, and then we have to take care of the reductions in his budget projection. So we were looking at other positions. And what I say is, there may be some, you know, obviously, we can't guarantee no layoffs, but we haven't had any for many years. So we're trying to protect jobs, not necessarily positions. So we may need to, positions may need to go through retirement, through attrition, that's how we can protect jobs. But some positions will go. But the objective is to protect jobs and protect the students in the classroom. So the allocations they have, we've been very generous with those class size over many years. They were not like that when, you know, we talk about when I was in the building, they were a lot higher, going back even when I was a principal through pandemic and that, you know, our students needed it. So that's what we've done. So most of the FTE cuts, the processes, we look together and we get our projections from Mr. Mashur. And then what we do is we match the projections in each building with the number of FTEs they may have had previously to what they had. We probably should have reduced last year, but we did not want to disrupt when those numbers came in in October to disrupt classrooms. So now we're kind of in a two-phase of reducing. So a lot of it has to do with that. And then we're looking at other positions, you know, as well to reduce. And again, the objective is to save jobs. We will, as HR goes through their processing, we'll make sure, obviously, the board is, you know, informed and that you have all the detail you need.
I do, if you don't mind if I could follow, is the, is the cuts or the possible cuts related to the federal funding cuts that was brought up to us, the 5.8 million or in another list I saw, 4.39 million? Is that related to that, or is it the projection that's coming up?
Most of it is the projections from the state budget, but there can be a domino effect. For example, when we lost that HRA health budget, that we lost the 1.4 million already. So then we have to move staff around. During the pandemic, that happened a lot as we were getting federal funding. We were very good at not putting sustainable costs into the one-time money, but there were certain positions we did because we needed to keep them. So the majority right now are more because of our budget alignment, state budget and enrollment through the current FTE. If these additional, once they come to fruition, we do have staff on all these other budgets that I just mentioned earlier. So there would be potentially reductions. But again, position reductions and changes may occur, but we're trying to save jobs for the sake of the students and the community. So that would be our objective if someone needs to move a position.
The only reason I say that, I, I know there's federal cuts for Title II, III, and IV. And I just don't want it to be us panicking and saying, okay, we, we're losing 4 million, 5 million, and now we got a cut. If we, if this is the root cause of the cuts, then I want to know how those, if those 4 million, 5 million dollars, if, when, if they're eliminated, to begin with, how are they being used to begin with? If they're nice-to-have type of money that we're, because I know some of a professional development, some of, some other things, we just, we want it to equate to what, what the money's being used versus, okay, we're losing 5 million, now we got to do cuts. So it would be nice to know what that money is actually being used for that we're losing. And if that, if that loss equate to FTEs? Or is it things that we could do without for the time being?
So we can get you that report with all the detail, no problem. There are some FTEs on those budgets, but there's also other costs like curriculum materials, professional development. So there's a combination of staff and other things that are on there. There's other programs that are on there as well. So it's a combination, and we can get you those reports for sure.
Yeah, I mean, there's things that are, that are good, but we could do without. For example, if professional development means going to out-of-state, then I'd rather have the FTE and find a way to do professional development locally. So this is kind of being fiscally responsible. And I just want to make sure that money that we're losing, to begin with, how it's being used. And then we can make a determination, is it, does it equate to an FTE? Or is it something that we could, you know, tighten the belts for the time being?
We can look at other things. Tom, maybe you can correct me on this. I think 89% of our budget is our staff, though, approximately, isn't that around that number? But, but we are also brainstorming other things like reductions in curriculum budgets and materials. Staff development can be one of them, there's no doubt. Some of the staff development, though, is on that federal funding. So if it goes away, then that won't be available for those conferences as well. But we can definitely look at that. And we were going to discuss it a little more in depth at the finance committee that we had scheduled, but I know we have to post, or we have to postpone that. So we're going to have a little more detail.
And I'll just add, there's consultants, there's other things that could be considered before we get to FTEs or our teachers. And this is one typical organization would do. They look at things that they could survive without, and cutting their own employees would be a last resort.
And we have that list, you know, through our executive cabinet. We were trying to make it, so like with the, the cuts we have to make through the state, if we have to do that, we can sustain it, and we will not feel a lot of pain with the majority of our staff. Like I said, we may have some position movement, but I don't see a big problem. These other cuts are where we would have to get into more in-depth. That's where, but because of the way Tom operates and the way we have in the board, we come up with multiple plans. So we have what we call, right now, the most likely, the best, it's not the best case. So we have the best case, the most likely, and then we put in a third plan, if these federal cuts come to fruition, what would that mean? So we're kind of planning all levels, and we're calm about it. We can look at other things. I think our, I'm proud of our executive cabinet. They actually, over the last week, we've had multiple budget meetings, and we brainstormed. And sometimes, to your point, what we're looking at doing is maybe taking budgets from certain funding, like state grants that we got, and moving it to protect these positions. So those kind of brainstorming are happening with our team. And we've had some very, very good meetings. So I'm, I'm not overly concerned with the current leveling of the budget Tom just presented. We'll be a little more concerned when we start hearing more about these federal, or if, I mentioned earlier, if the state has to backfill other potential federal losses like Title I, IDEA, pre-reduced launch, head start, then that will impact our state budgeting. That's the bigger concern right now. We've got this as far as this current budget and what Tom presented. I'm confident that we won't feel a tremendous amount of pain. I think people have gotten used to the very low-class size, so they're going to see that. But the reality is, is we probably should have reduced to come down to where our numbers were a while ago during the pandemic. We definitely tried to avoid the class as much as we can, and we're also looking at positions outside the class. In fact, I had every classification listed, you know, different options to make sure that we're being kind of equitable, and then looking at where can we, what can we afford more that wouldn't be a detriment to both our staff and our students? So a lot of, there's, there's a tremendous amount of, trustee Al Jami and the rest of the board and the public, there's been a lot of conversations that have been starting, you know, going back to January, really, but it's ramped up because we're now in the staffing season. And I think, as trustee Barry said, because people are seeing the headlines of the cuts, people are getting nervous about it. Here's the thing, we got this, we got a plan, we know what we're doing with the budget, we'll be fine. But we have to deal with the reality we're facing, which is why I also mentioned about that at the beginning of the meeting. And I know the board's aware of that. We can also have meetings with Tom or I, if board trustees want to go over some of the more specific detail, we're happy, happy to do that as well. We just don't want to, we're not going to, you know, make announcements in the public because, in fairness to employees and things of that nature, there's a process in HR.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
Appreciate the questions and comments.
So Tom, this presentation and the budget hearing, that's the minimum by law we have to do. Correct. So I guess we can make sure that this report is on the website ASAP. From what I'm hearing, it's not. And if we get phone calls from the public that people want to see a little more details, we can always hold a forum if we need to. Yeah, just want to make sure that's out there. So if you have any questions, reach out to the administration. Thank you.
Okay.
Presentation is on the website?
It is.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure.
I'm sure that.
If it's not, let's make sure. We'll, we'll just want to make sure that it's on there. If it is or it isn't, we'll pass that, let's make sure it's on there. And to the public, this is by law, this is the minimum that, you know, our finance director has to have a budget hearing and see if there's any input from the board or the public. But if somebody's out there, like gone home, wants more information, there's, nothing in the law that says that we can't have another forum if we need to. That's all I'm trying to put out there. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.